All right, if you want to give me just a moment of silence, please. We go forward. Okay, we will now open the Estacada City Council meeting. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you give me roll call, please, city?
Counselor Hughes here. Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf. He's here. Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkway.
Here, thank you very much for that, Sadie. Okay, we are at our first citizen and community group comment. And Jake Kuzinski, is that?
Okay. Jake Kuzinski, you need the address as well.
That'd be preferred, yeah.
Three two seven zero zero Southeast Lee Wood Lane. Number ninety one A, Boring, Oregon. Mayor, city, city council members. I wanted to talk a little bit briefly tonight about Dan Walker disposal. Continuing to operate in the city when I know their contract is up. I have been an employee of Walker disposal just shy of five years. Was recently terminated. Been advised to not go into it. I, there are going to be lawsuits coming. I want you guys to think heavily about what you think you know, how the company operates. I have inside knowledge. It will become public, I have proof. They don't operate in good faith. The people you think, the person you think is running the company that is signing everything is actually not running the company. I know I've read the rules, I'm not supposed to name names, but the person that is actually running the company. I know you guys have had issues with in the past. The company operates illegally. And I, truthfully, I think the city deserves better. I was an excellent employee for five years, never late once, never missed a day. I'm not going to go into the termination, but you guys see me out there, I work late at night, early morning, weekends. Righteous anger is what I'm going to leave you guys with, and that you should really think twice. The city of Estacada, if that is what is most important, that we are going to. I love the city of Estacada, I'm going to continue working here. You know, whether or not that's, I don't, not with Walker, but I'm going to continue working here. But until that time, I, you know, you may see me out here boycotting with the sandwich board, boycott Walker disposal. And I'll tell you that I left several reviews over the weekend. Google, other things, my reviews extremely poor of the company, and they've blown up. I didn't call people, ask them to give me thumbs up. It's kind of crazy how many people are in tune with the garbage company here in Estacada. I can tell you that the company previously under ownership of Judy Walker, I think that's okay to say. She cared about the city of Estacada, she cared about running legally, honestly, openly. Treating everybody fairly. Current ownership does not. Please think about it, please. I think you guys are only hearing one side. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jake. All right. I think that's all I have right now for citizen comment, do I have any online or anything? No? All right, moving along, we are at the consent agenda, you've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda, do we have any questions? Or any items you'd like to move forward to council business?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, but first, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, we're at apartment and committee reports. Do any of you have a report from your groups that you'd like to put forward today, charity?
Yeah, so the Estacada School District met and just a couple of updates here, their summer park series was this, was a success. In the, for the future, they're trying to get mailers put together for stakeholders and those mailers will be highlighting and updating what's going on in the district. So, the way that it was described was it was going to look more like, a little bit like a catalog. And so that'll be handy. The varsity high school baseball field project, the excavation should be complete. And the turf is being installed or should be being installed now. And then after that, then the softball field will be installed in early October. And also a hitting facility will also be installed. I don't know if anyone's noticed, but Deep Creek Learning Academy is up and running and they currently have two classrooms in full operation. Youth sports numbers for fall have increased quite a bit, but I don't think we are surprised there with the growth. And the numbers for student enrollment is one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, so we're almost at that two thousand mark, and that's for all the schools, the grade school, middle school, two grade schools, middle school and high school, that's not including Summit. And Superintendent Carpenter went on to explain a little bit about after the bond not passing, the Oregonian and OPB ran a couple of big stories about small communities that have schools like ours that needed major funding, major upgrades, that it brought a lot of attention to communities like ours and hopefully that that'll help bring some awareness and will help to maybe get some, some bond money or whatever, but our, because our bond didn't pass, it definitely great, got a lot of press. And also River Mill Elementary is already, it's over capacity, way over capacity, so serious conversation needs to be had from the school board, what, how they want to move forward, so if they need to redesign the zones for the district, they're noticing numbers decreasing from Clockness River and numbers increasing from River Mill, and that's just because of where the growth is expanding. So, they're kind of going to go to the drawing board and see how they're going to rectify that and even out the elementary school populations a little bit between the two, so that's all I got.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else, Jonathan?
Yeah, so traffic and public safety's got quite a bit going on, but they're getting ready to look at putting together a first aid course that they're going to sponsor, it sounds like eight to eleven people, I think like that, to be able to get first aid and CPR. As well as look to resources to offer it for the community so that anybody that wants it can pay whatever, I think it was a hundred and twelve dollars or something like that, would get certified and just to get more people in our community involved. Then they also brought a a bunch of information, I think the packet they said was nine hundred and something pages or something, but essentially on different traffic speed mitigation options and stuff like that, that they're looking at for like the hills and stuff like that. They're going to do a subcommittee to kind of attack it and bring us more actionable items specific to the areas in town that we can't curtail with speed bumps and stuff like that. And then, other than that, just including information on fentanyl and other drugs and things that are going on in town on the website, they're going to up their community posting, just keeping people more aware of what's going on, what to look for and so on and so forth, as well as resources, so.
Great, thank you for that update.
The economic, economic development committee met and just John McGarza has been great to work with on that committee and he's just helping put things together. Helped take some of the feedback from the council and working towards putting together the economic development strategic plan and that's going to be seeing some great things come out of that committee, so just still very young committee, but everyone is coming together really well, I'm going to see some good stuff.
You've got a lot of great people.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you guys, I appreciate those reports. Now, we're at the city managers' report.
Okay, a little slide deck here to keep me on track. All right, first of all, the next, we'll go to the second slide right away. And I just wanted to comment that Hellway Extension is moving forward, culverts are being installed this week, I think they're scheduled to be completed by the end of the day tomorrow. And Kurt and Ed are here, so we can give them a little shout out when, when they get up here, because I know that especially Ed has been working hard on that and Jack from ESA to get our permits and keep that moving forward, so, next slide. And we did have the regional solutions team visit Estacada, we took them on a little tour, talked about financial needs for our infrastructure out here and how our needs for infrastructure impact the fire district and the school district and able them being able to pass a bond, if we have to raise our rates too high for water or wastewater then it makes it, and PGE's rates going up, it makes it too hard for people to vote yes on a bond that they probably would want to vote yes on for improving schools and our fire station. We, this is at the entrance of the wastewater plant, we took them on a little tour, showed them the wastewater site where it currently is, where it's planned to be. Went through the industrial campus, the new residential neighborhoods, Wade Creek Restoration stopped there and then we took them, Maggie Kelly was with us. We went through the high school, talked about the school's needs and stopped at the fire station, talked to the chief. So, it was, it was a good morning, couple hours showing them around and just really showcasing Estacada, there's a lot to be proud of here, a lot of good work going on, but we need we're a small community still, we need some assistance and that, just, you can probably read there, of course, but the regional solutions team consists of somebody from DLCD, Business Oregon, DEQ, and then also housing, transportation and energy folks from the state.
And just the, the woman from the school district.
Maggie, yes.
Did just an outstanding job.
She did.
Got us a bus so that we could tour them around. Knew exactly what to point out at the high school as far as, you know, deficiencies and then made sure we got over to where all the portable classrooms were with that elementary school. So, we weren't shy about telling them that we needed state resources and that if they're if we're going to continue to take the high level of growth that we, when other communities aren't, that they need to help us find resources. And they said that they would get us a report in the next few weeks identifying resources that we might be able to use and also pathways to funds from Business Oregon and other groups. It was a really, I thought it was such a positive meeting and it was so helpful to get them actually out in the communities, seen all of our grown.
And a big shout out to the school district for providing a bus for us, so we all could ride together and talk while we ride. All right, next slide. All right, this is a quick update, you've probably received emails about this, but there is new required public meeting training for elected officials. It's mandatory, OGECC or Oregon Government Ethics Commission, but it's more fun to say OGECC, is provide, they're going to be providing virtual or you can go in person, starting in October, I was going to put a link here on where you can register, but it was so complicated that I will need to send you an email, so be watching for that because all elected officials are, will be required to take this training about public meetings and open meetings and quorum, sure it's about all the stuff that you probably already know, but we'll be getting that information to you. All right, next slide. All right, coming up on Saturday, Oktoberfest will be here, I heard that they are still looking for a couple of volunteers, potentially, they, they was just earlier today, so probably they still need a couple of volunteers to help with the pie eating contest judging and the costume contest judging, so that's later in the afternoon, three thirty, four, four thirty, right in there. Give us a shout at City Hall if anybody wants that.
They need people to be part of the pie eating.
Yes, yeah, I'm sure they do need contestants too, but we do need judges, so give us a shout, we'll connect you with the right people to volunteer on Saturday, but it should be a lot of fun, it starts at eleven o'clock in the morning. Goes till seven PM downtown Estacada. And then I wanted to give a, just a, I know we have an update coming about our water master plan, but I wanted to go over this because there have been some questions about what are we doing with parks? So, just a quick look and then we can delve into this more later at another meeting or a workshop, but in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for parks maintenance, we have budgeted over six hundred thousand dollars, it, that takes care of our personnel costs, equipment maintenance, facility maintenance, projects, like a project might be putting in new mark chips at a playground, things like that, and then contractual services, because we do contract for the park maintenance up at the new area of Wade Creek Park and the library. Next slide. That we also have our park reserve fund, which is our system development charges that can only be spent on new, new construction or updates or new improvements, either building a new park or adding a new amenity to an existing park, it cannot be spent on maintenance or basic things like that, so we started out, our estimate was we were starting out at about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars with the beginning fund balance, we were estimating that we'll receive seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the year in some, in the system development charges and I'll be doing a another financial update, July, August, September, yeah, so it'll be next month. And we'll see how we're doing on that, but this is the money that we collect to build new parks and add new amenities, all right, next slide. Our project this year that we're using SDCs for is the splash pad. And that is not a great picture, but it kind of lets you know it's a lot cooler than I, I just going to slap it down somewhere in a rectangle and thankfully, we had some engineers get involved and now it, it'll be level and have some seating, seat walls. So, this is going to go in the front of Wade Creek Park and we do have the bid awarded. Or the contractor's been awarded, it'll be complete by spring, we'll use SDCs to pay for it and we have also had some other, we had engineering costs, we had to tap a water line to get a two inch meter in there. And then we, we've already pre-purchased the splash pad equipment, so it's ready to go, that's this year's project. And then on the next slide. I, is it not showing up out there correctly? Okay, sorry. So anyway, we'll go with the, okay, next, then this is a, this is a section that I clipped out of the Parks Master Plan. I highlighted the two things that we have not done yet and I didn't really touch the long term because that was seven plus years and those are some big, like the Estacada Lake Bridge. That's a big dream, but there, there's some big things on that longer term column on the right, we did already do Wade Creek Restoration, which is great, but I did highlight the couple of things that we haven't done yet in this, in these priorities. But just quickly at a glance, Campanella Park is complete except for until we can, you know, install that inclusive playground. At, I'm not sure when that will happen. We, the spray park is going into Wade Creek Park in this fiscal year, it'll be up and running by next summer because it'll be installed and kids will be able to use it, it won't have water on it, it will just be they can ride their little scooters around or, or whatever by the spring. Our, we've added two new neighborhood parks, Overlook and Gardener, little playgrounds in those communities. We have engineering complete for the lake shore, water access and trail. So, we're just needing to raise money for that, which would be SDCs and Parks Master, Parks. Oregon Parks Rec has a grant that we can get for that as well. Our Wade Creek Park three and the Creek Restoration is complete, Casadero Park improvements have been done. And the sports field improvements, they're in process, they're in partnership with the school district, but their kids are using the fields, I think, as already, so those are kind of some of the things that we've done over the past few years. And the next slide, what's next? We'll be planning to do an update to the Parks Master Plan next year. A mini update or a full, I'm not sure what the update's exactly going to look like yet, but it will be updated and there's, because there's new priorities emerging, we've accomplished a lot in the past six years. We've got people consistently asking for pickleball courts for, I have heard from the council, a sports complex is a priority, that might be a little longer term, but these things we need to capture in, through community interaction, through community input, through council input. And more open space, people might want more open space, we'll find out when we do that, that master plan, but I just wanted to give you that quick glance at parks and are there any questions on any of that? I don't want to delve too deep in park, but go, go ahead.
So, outside of the maintenance budget, we're spending a hundred and, what was that slide, say a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars on parks this year, but taking in seven hundred and eighty thousand?
That, well, it's a little more, it'll be a little more than that for the splash pad, but yes, we, and we are saving, we don't have to spend it in the year that we get it. Because if we're going to do a major project like a sports complex or the waterfront park, we're going to need to, we can accumulate those funds, save them you know, multi-year to put towards a project, so we've accomplished a lot of the little check-offs in the current plan. Got those going forward and yes, we have, we are just spending money on, is there anything, there wasn't anything else that we were doing?
So, my, my other question is, it's, it's more of just like the idea that we're trying to sell that we're actively working on parks and, and I'm again, not to be abrasive, but we're trying to sell that we're actively doing something about our Parks Rec situation, but the splash pad's been ongoing for a couple of years now, correct? It moved around, we bought, we purchased parts and now we're going to finally install it and we're going to still count that as an accomplishment for twenty-five?
That's when it will be completed.
Yeah, I'm just not, I would just like to, for the record, I would just like to see more things going on. Like, I think we can multitask them more than just addressing maintenance and the a splash pad, I, I just, I feel like there should be.
Okay, we could talk.
I think we'll get clear on the parks thing, but I would just.
I think we will, yeah, and I appreciate that input, I think that.
Yes, so the question for council, and this will be your decision, is and the good news is we're updating our Parks Master Plan is we've been saving funds for some of these larger projects, so city staff's been able to kind of check the box on a lot of the smaller things like under a couple hundred thousand, and then the question for this council will be, do you want to continue accruing funds so we can do like the local match for Parks Oregon State Parks Grant or a tour of tourism grant for, like the waterfront type of parks that are going to be millions of dollars? So, we know there's some grant funds that might be available that we can apply for that require a local match, do you want us to continue accruing funds so that we can eventually do that project? Or do you want us spending, more spending money as it comes in on smaller parks projects? And so that'll be, that'll be a question for you, and then as far as ranking the projects. For a long time, though, the water projects were kind of the number one projects with council here, just because that was kind of what they were most passionate about. But now I just noticed a whole lot more about like sports field complexes and things of that nature, and I think that's just as, the community evolves, like priorities can evolve too. And so the other thing that we'll be hoping to get out of the Parks Master Planning is there might be five super cool projects, all of which could be multimillion dollars, some which can more easily attract grant funds than others. What, how, how would you prioritize those and what would you like to see it built first? So, that's, those are, those are kind of the small projects versus giant projects and then just the ordering of the projects, this is what the community wants to see, we promised them this, we've got to be first. Versus, well, this one we might be able to get a couple million, which bring, brings the cost down to us, so that's we'll behave opportunistically and go after that one first, and those are questions that like we can help you understand grant programs and other funds that might be available, but when it comes down to the priorities, it's really you as a council that instructs us on what to do.
Have we went to customer fee, or, you know, when I say customer, community feedback, like we did a poll recently, I think, right, that captured some of people's.
The parks, the park survey is still out and open, I mean, they're capturing those comments and such, but we'll do that in our master plan update, that'll be, that's when we'll take a look at this and say, okay, these is, this is what we checked off, they'll, they'll do outreach to the community, much like the transportation plan, only this is probably more tangible because it's parks and it just feels like I think people will get even more involved. And that's where we'll get the feedback and we'll identify new priorities.
The, the last time we did one of those really in depth, what we found out was there was a lot of desire in the community for active outdoor recreation. And so that's when we started kind of promoting the, the city is, is a gateway to the national forest and as you know, some of the bike tourism, because there's that corridor down Santiam and then we were do, doing great promoting hiking until the, the fire. But yeah, one of, that's something that the mayor and I both worked on probably over a decade ago.
Long time.
Yeah, which was about that. How do we, how do we brand Estacada as an active active outdoor recreation community and then what are the things that are distinct to Estacada versus other places in the area that will allow us to, to provide amenities to the locals and also to bring people in from a tourism standpoint? And I think that's the last time we really did like a deep, in-depth dive into like how the community viewed itself and what they were looking for going forward.
I mean, I think before we could say anything, and I, I want to shore something up here, like I, this is not an attack on what the staff is or isn't doing or what they're not going after, I'm just simply asking we're going to promote a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar project, I get that we're carrying stuff over, I'm not taking away from that, I'm just asking what we're currently also working on, that's what I'm saying, I just, I don't like seeing that we're only addressing one thing, I do understand your feedback on if we're going to go after, I completely get that and I have understood that. But I think, I just want to see this get shored up where we can establish some priorities and then we can start really explaining to people where we're spending their money on an active, like a fair timeline, something that's reasonable. Because right now, I mean, like the watershore thing, the water access, that's been an ongoing issue, right? Like, we could say we're saving money all we want, but we're also not throwing money at it yet, right? Because I'm just, let's come up with a plan, that's what I'd like to see, and I'd like community feedback, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, community feedback, come up with a plan and move forward, and all the staff that is also doing the Broadway project and the paving and the work down on Grove and Forest and Grove and that, you know, getting, managing the wastewater facility thing, and now we're going to hear about the water needs and that's also the same staff that does the parks stuff, so, yeah. So it's, but it, you know, priorities, if that's, if that's a priority of the council and the community, then that's something we need to stop up in that area. So, we can have different people to have capacity.
Great, anything else you'd like to add?
I'm just saying, yeah, I think it'd be nice, just if we can have the Parks Master One happen and decide, get the feedback from the community on what's most important and lay out a clear plan of yes, we're saving, we, yes, we have this money in SDCs and this is the specific project that we're saving for and not an anonymous, but I think that would we can chunk away at some of the smaller items and then get the feedback on what we have grant opportunities to, and maybe if we get the three or four big projects that are important to the community and then we have the opportunity to take advantage of some grants on some of those, we can turn around and turn it right back to the community and say, hey, well, if this, if we can get this done this much sooner, although it's priority number three, and we can have those funds come in from, or we're not having to pay for all of it. Then what does that look like and then give them the, get feedback from them based on what it's going to cost the community for what they're going to get for their buck, I think that'd be a great opportunity.
Okay, great.
And as a council, you could say, you know, here are, I'm going to call them modest projects and then here are like, you know, big projects and you could say we really want twenty percent of the SDCs to go in these more modest projects that people can see immediately. And we're going to be really transparent about, or it could be thirty or forty, whatever percentage you guys say, and then we're going to be really transparent about here's like the visionary project, priorities one, two, three and four, here's the approximate cost, here's where the money's at. Do you want us to keep accruing the money for these big projects? Do you want us to adjust the percentage so that we're getting more neighborhood projects? Those are all conversations that can occur during this planning process and then on an ongoing basis, just so that how we're accruing money or spending money really reflects what the community wants.
Yeah, I, I like that, and I appreciate you cleaning that up for me, that's simple, what I'm asking is that we just are more accountable with what our timelines are and where our money's going.
Hey, anything else you'd like to add? Does that finish up your?
Yep, that's all I've got.
Peters, or anything more you'd like to add before we go?
No, we're, we, we may be scheduling an executive session in the coming time just to talk about some franchise issues that we're having, but we're, we're trying to keep a really close eye on it, where I, Sadie and Melanie and I get to talk about it a lot and we're trying to keep open lines of communication and really develop and understanding exactly what is and isn't happening and we're, we're seeing some community feedback and getting some other stuff, so. We thought about scheduling that, um, and we're not white there yet, but we're getting closer to maybe having, have some of those conversations.
Okay, great. Well, let's get on it fast and have these things out of the way. So I don't let them fester too long.
Yeah.
All right, um, we are now, uh, going to enter into a public hearing. So I will now close the city council meeting and open the public hearing and we will meet on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five in order to amending title sixteen, development of the Estacada Municipal Code Park Solutions. And I will hand that over to you, Alan.
All right, thank you.
What's that? Sorry, I said, take seven.
Take seven. Well, that was a good segue into this, the Parkland Solutions Phase One ordinance here. This is the second, second hearing on this ordinance. Um, so yeah, I'll give a quick refresher on, uh, where we're at. So, um, just a reminder, this is phase one. Um, yeah, this is just a quick, quick interim code updates who require dedication of park space in all new subdivisions and plan developments. And phase two, which we were just discussing, would be the more thorough community vetted updates to the development code, Parks Master Plan and in the SDC's schedule. Um, so if the ordinance is adopted tonight, it basically would represent the completion of phase one. All right, it's kind of small, but, um, if you see that little yellow box in the bottom there, uh, in red outline, that's where we are tonight. Um, and so tonight, the council will consider adopting the ordinance, adopting with changes or rejecting it. Um, but if it is adopted tonight, the second reading would happen early next month and it would go into effect in early November. Um, just to give a quick, um, overview of, of where we're at now and where we've been. At the August meeting, we reviewed the project history. Um, I went over the draft amendments in detail and also the accrual approval criteria in detail. And then two weeks ago, at the first council hearing, uh, we discussed the draft amendments again in detail. And, um, council decided to continue the hearing until tonight, uh, to give staff, that is me, give me time to incorporate the, um, all the changes that were desired and expressed. Okay, and I just wanted to give a quick overview of what those, uh, amendment revisions are. Um, all three are within chapter sixteen dot one one six of our development code. So the first one is that any park land that the city accepts would be eligible for credit against parks SDCs. So that credit had been removed in previous versions of the draft amendments, but, um, it has now been reinstated. And second, only developments for which one quarter acre or more of parkland is needed will be required to include parkland. And so that's basically if the required amount of parkland is under a quarter acre, the developer would simply pay parks SDCs, um, for each lot. So that would be basically their fees and loo. And finally, the section pertaining to fees and loo of parkland dedication has been completely removed. Um, so as the code is drafted now, parks at SDCs, as I said, would act as the fees and loo of park dedication, which just made that section irrelevant. And so Planning Commission's recommendation is to adopt this ordinance, amending title sixteen, sixteen standards regarding parkland dedication at the time of residential subdivision and plan development. And here are the next steps.
Okay. All right, I will now, and that's all you have on this?
That's all I have.
Okay.
That's it.
Uh, do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact?
I do.
Okay, we have one, Mike. Anybody else? All right, the council now hear the staff report. We heard that. Is there any correspondence regarding this application?
There's not.
Okay, I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing on a uh, specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter and a failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, I don't have anything from the audience, so we'll move right on. Does the staff have any additional? Do I have one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I didn't know that. That's where that was supposed to come. Hold on just a minute. All right, go ahead. I got you right here. Just come up to the mic.
How's it going? On the draft change where it said the parkland dedication can be credited towards SDCs, is that the, so if they dedicate? So if the SDCs are, let's say a million dollars and they dedicate five hundred thousand dollars worth of land, do they just get a full five hundred thousand decrease of SDCs they have to pay?
And is it okay for me to just answer directly? Oh, great, okay, I wasn't sure. Um, so your question is if, do they just get a full credit?
What's the purpose of crediting them, the SDCs, if they dedicate, if we requiring them to dedicate the land instead of requiring them to dedicate the land and pay the SDCs in full?
We, okay, the way the code is written, they would be required to propose dedication. And then the city would decide whether or not that it would accept the dedication. So if it does not accept the dedication, if it wants the fees instead, then the developer would just pay the parks SDCs. But if the city does want the land for the park, then they could subtract the amount, um, of the value of the land. They would just credit that toward what they would pay toward SDCs.
Right, and, uh, what, what was the purpose of adding this into the later iteration of the code instead of just leaving it as? That, that wasn't in there before, right? Before it was, they would do the dedication and they would pay their full SDCs, right?
Well, that is how the code is written now. So basically, the earlier revisions or the earlier draft amendments, it removed that credit and it was requested that it was, that it be reinstated by council.
The council requested to put that back in there so that it wasn't like, um, a double requiring a double donation, not a donation, the donation of the land, basically. And then, and no SDC credit. This way it's more equitable. Um, they, if they provide the land, then they will get some SDC credit for that. And that is how the council requested us to bring it back to them.
And the thought was that this could be revisited once we have a specific target in mind as to what we are gonna use these funds for.
My only issue with it is, you know, how, they should be doing both. They should be setting aside a portion of their land, not a large part, but they should be setting aside a portion of their land for park spaces and they should be paying the SDCs in full. Because we, because, again, as we saw earlier, only seven hundred and, we're only collecting seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of SDCs in the entire year twenty twenty-four. That doesn't build very much when it comes to park equipment, parks or anything like that. We, the city needs that money to invest in the future and to invest in future parks. They, developers should be building communities that work with the communities that's already here and building a portion of it as a park and like losing a few lot spaces, you know? At the end of the day, it shouldn't always be about money and I understand they have to be profitable, but when they're building communities that need to work with the communities that are already here, they should be dedicating a, a park space and they should be paying them in full so we can actually invest in the spaces that they're building, because we're gonna need those SDC monies to put equipment on that land and do all that stuff. And so we definitely need the land, but we absolutely need the fees too, to, to actually build equipment and build complexes and do those types of things. I would prefer, I would, I would like to have seen it where they had to do both instead of crediting them out. Uh, uh, or even if we just gave them a portion of the credit, you know, even if like, you, you took the value of land and then split it by fifty percent and gave them like a portion of the credit, I could see that being more equitable than just saying, oh, the land's worth this, our SDCs are worth this, they're just gonna give you with the amount of land or try to give the amount of land that equates to the entire SDCs and then they pay no SDCs. I mean, I get we're getting the land, but we would also, we would lose out on SDCs at that point. If they could, if they could get it awash.
They don't get to decide how much they're gonna dedicate. It's, it's a calculation based on the, the, the development. They don't get to decide how much they're gonna develop, they're gonna dedicate to a park. They can't say, I wanna do all the SDCs in a park. It's a calculation says that this much land is required from the developer for parks. And we did the math and it came up to about six percent. And then we were gonna charge SDCs on top of that and it's getting out of proportion with the rest of the SDCs. So I guess I, they're not, they, they don't get, they don't get to decide. And it's not a change in the code, it's keeping the code the way it's written.
But, but it is also requiring them, if their development's above a certain size, to offer the land first, so that the city can say, yes, this fits our plan, this fits in, you know, this land would be useful in the park system. Or no, it doesn't. So it does allow us to have a, an option to obtain land, but we do pay for it. And that's how the, yeah, so I, I hear what you're saying, Vincent, yeah, that you would like to see it both ways.
Yeah, Peter, you had something you wanted?
Yeah, so the thing with exactions and all SDCs are exactions is there has to be a nexus between what we're requiring of the people um, and the project they plan on build, they plan to build. And so requiring uh, parkland or open space for future housing, absolutely, there's a strong nexus there because those people are going to use parks and open space. But then the, um, the amount of the exaction has to be roughly proportionate to the benefit received. And so the way that we calculate our SDCs is we look at the total number of projects in our master plan and the cost estimates at that time. And then that's how we bill out. Um, the way that SDC credits have traditionally worked, um, in other jurisdictions that have pursued them more aggressively than we have, is that you get the developer to build something that is beyond what is roughly proportionate to the benefit received. So e- example would be, and if you're familiar with the city of Westland, where the city hall is up on the hill, there's a Safeway there, that whole thing. So the, the developers of that area put in significantly more, like the, the amount that they put in in order to get all of that infrastructure up was significantly more than what would have been roughly proportionate. So then what the city did is it gave them SDC credits. So let's say, and these aren't the accurate numbers, but let's say they, they put in three hundred units worth of infrastructure and they built a hundred units. They then got two hundred units of credits. They then sold those credits to other developers at like eighty cents on the dollar. So that's how they recovered their costs. And then the future in time, developers were able to buy the SDCs at a discount and the city had already had all the stuff built. So that's for cities that have aggressively developed credit systems, that's how it can work. And that's how you make sure that like the pipes that you're building are sufficient not just for that next um, subdivision, but the next eight subdivisions, so you don't have to come in and rip up your pipes and, and replace them. So that's kind of how we calculate the SDCs, what we can calculate as far as SDCs and then how a credit system can work. And then the other thing that I would say is, um, the, the nexus is referred to as the Nolan decision. The roughly proportioned the benefit receives called the Dolan decision. There's a new decision that came out this summer called Sheets. And the Sheets case, um, dealt with a transportation, um, SDC. And this current Supreme Court took a much harder look at that SDC than even the, um, the, um, the, the Dolan, um, the Dolan case, which was Justice Scalia. Um, and so we're going to have to really dial in our SDCs and make sure that they are roughly proportionate because the, the days of just satting it for single-family houses, um, it's where we can still do it, we just wanna make sure that it truly accurately reflects those numbers. And that's part of the reason that I was recommending that we do this parks master plan update, because we know that the cost per acre of land in Estacada has gone up significantly. And we also wanna, um, you know, as we're adding potential projects, we wanna make sure that we're, um, capturing the funds to build them. And then when Oregon Solutions was here, I sounded exactly like Counselor McElroy, because I was explaining to them as we were talking about SDCs that there's some level at which developers that will no longer have a margin for them to develop and the development will stop and that we have to holistically look at this. So if they're saying, well, can't you just up your fees? Can't you just up your SDCs? No. Like, there's a point at which it will no longer pencil and I don't know what that level is. But, you know, I pointed to the sign that said houses starting in the five hundreds and I'm like, it's not five hundred, it's like five ninety-nine and it's more than that. And that's what we're seeing here. And at some point, it won't price out anymore. So we have to be really careful that we're complying with federal law and SDCs. Um, and also that we just have them dialed in to market reality.
So just for a clarification, so, so it would, if this was enacted, it would be, uh, the developer would potentially be required to set aside a portion of land. And if we acquire that portion of land, we would just get the raw land with nothing built on it, right?
Or you could require them to build it.
There's some negotiation that can happen there.
But it would cost us money for them to, to build, put the equipment and do all the things.
They would get credit for, they would get credit for building it. The, the savings, depending on the size of the project, is prevailing wage. So Westland's City Hall was built on spec. That was built by a developer and then the city decided to buy it. Like, the city realized cost savings, but that had not been negotiated in advance. Um, so like, there are a variety of ways that we can work with developers and to come up with something that is fair and equal to them that they also wanna do. But there's also developers that have a land that maybe it's deeply sloped or something, so we wouldn't want that. There's limited benefit to us for having that as a park because, you know, it's just not working. So it's like, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. And then the, the other piece is that, um, sometimes HOAs don't like having what they think of as their common space as a park. Yes, so we have to be careful about that too, because we want people to be able to use parks.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I, my, my point was, you know, we, we're either getting the raw land and they're, or we're getting the SDC money at this point, right?
Right.
You know, the, the, the tax burden's gonna fall on somewhere else in the fund. If we, if we're, if we're taking the land every time, we're gonna need to come up with that money somewhere else to actually put the equipment and build out, build the, the infrastructure of a park. You know, the, the land itself, I, I understand has value, but it's, it's gonna take a lot, it takes a lot of extra, like, SDC money to actually build up those parks and make them usable for the community. So if we, if we're taking the raw land every time, they're getting the credit for the SDCs that we need to come up with other taxpayer money to pay for that park and build out that park. Whereas, or if we choose the SDCs, you know, if, and if we did take the fees in lieu, they, they build up the land, we take the SDCs and we go spend it somewhere else, right?
So the, the other piece is that because of Oregon's very unique property tax system, the new houses that are generating property taxes that are approximately their value versus historic. Uh, if you look at the assessed value of historic houses in Estacada versus their market value, it's off by a factor of sometimes like four or five or six. And so the new construction is not just paying the SDCs, they're also paying the property taxes into the general fund that far better reflect their actual value versus their assessed value.
Okay, I just wanted to ensure, you know, because if we, if, you know, like I said, if we are taking the park dedication every time, you know, that money needs to come from somewhere to build up those parks if they're not also paying SDC. I think it, it would, it makes more sense that if we would have required the land and also had them paid their portion of the SDCs for the parks, but that is just my thinking advice.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you. Okay. That's all I have on that. So I will now close the public hearing. And I will reopen the city council. And you can look up there and see the motions that, uh, you have a choice of. So can I get a motion on the floor? To accept.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five in ordinance amending title sixteen, development of the Estacada Municipal Code Parkland Solution.
Okay, I have a first or a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, let's do roll call.
Yes.
No vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to council business. And Alan, do you want to escape or are you going to stick it out for the whole?
I think I might stick around for a little bit.
All right, first we have a water master plan draft, Kirk McLeod. It's good to see you, sir.
All right, yes, you do.
This is my partner, Ed Hodges with Curran McLeod Engineers. So tonight, I think it's the first time we've been before you to talk about the water system master plan. So I I have provided a little overview of each component of the plan. And then we wanted to address any questions you have tonight. And then we anticipate bringing it back to you for adoption next month. So uh, with that, I thought I'd just walk through these and anytime you've got a question, just let me know, we'll talk about it. So in that first, the general overview, as you're all well aware, we are. This summer, we pushed our capacity a couple of times where we have triggered that curtailment. Plan that we've adopted. So anytime a water demands went over one point four million. We triggered our curtailment program. So that happened a few times. I don't know how many times, a few times. Those are behind us now. I think maybe three weeks ago was the last time we were concerned about. Peak capacity. So we're down now maybe to one point one, one point two peak days on a good hot day right now. So we have the ability to treat one point six million is our output capacity right now. Um, we have plenty of source, but we just don't have the mechanical ability to to process it through the water treatment plant. So let me walk you through each component. Our source, we have two point six million gallons per day of. Raw water permit, that actually not permitted, it's certificated. So it's a it's a water right you cannot lose. It's already certificated to the city of Estacada. Uh, we have projected that you'll need about three million gallons per day. To meet your demands by the year twenty forty-five. So a twenty year planning window. Will need maybe another four hundred thousand gallons per day of source water to meet those demands. There are a lot of potential sources we've talked about. Uh, one of that we'll talk a little bit more here when we talk about distribution, but. Water losses and inefficiencies at the water plant are the are big items that we can conservation and um. Curtailments, I mean, if we can reduce our water use, that's just the same as expanding the water plant capacity. So. Currently, we we lose a large portion of our water that's treated, we lose it to losses, things that are not metered and not sold. So that that's going to be something that we can immediately address to make sure that next summer we can meet our peak day demands. So source was saying that potentially you could negotiate rights from Timothy Lake. We know of other communities that have done that. Your to supplement our demand for entire warm season would require maybe about. Point two five percent of Timothy Lake water. So point two five percent of the. The twenty eight billion gallons they have stored at Timothy Lake. It's one option to consider. Uh, other options are reclaimed water. So we've talked quite a bit over the last year with OWRD and internally here about reclaimed water. So. Water that's processed by the city of Estacada and then discharged back into the Clackamas River. Is unallocated, no community has allocated that water. So there's a program under state statutes where we can use that as reclaimed water. So in that case, we would use, for example, the Clackamas River would become essentially our conduit. So we we collect water at the water plant, we process water, we discharge it back into the Clackamas. We'd be able to extract that volume that we discharge discharge back at the water plant. So we could increase our. Our withdrawal from the Clackamas River for reclaimed water. I think that has maybe the the best likelihood of providing our source that'll meet our twenty year demands by doing that. That amount of water would be four hundred thousand gallons a day, perhaps. So that by itself would meet all of our demands for the next twenty years. And as our demands increase over the next twenty years, the amount of water we discharge back into the river increases. So the amount of reclaimed water would increase with that. That doesn't require an OWRD permit, that's simply done under a state statute that allows us to do that. We talked about well sources uh which have not been productive. We have not seen good wells in the neighborhood. We've talked about potentially buying existing water rights from people who are no longer using them, like the mill, for example. But those water rights are very small. Uh, and perhaps buying water from adjacent communities. So I know Boring promotes that they have a lot of water, a lot of groundwater. Uh, city of Portland has water, city Sandy has water, Sandy buys from the city of Portland. So maybe indirectly, if you went to Sandy, you'd be buying city Portland water. City of Portland is getting ready, of course, build a big filter plant. So their three hundred million dollar cost now maybe over three billion dollars. So. Not going to be cheap for Sandy to buy water. And in turn, it wouldn't be cheap for you to buy from Sandy. So I think our best bet for source is um. Conservation, repair leaks, damages, keep our eyes open on where the leaks may be. And to improve the inefficiencies of the water treatment plant.
I got one question here. I know we're talking about. Where our water issues are, but after driving through the new developments, I noticed something the other day. And I just thought it was kind of odd. I looked around and I saw water trucks pulling water out of the meters. Are pulling them out of the the hydrants and they're pulling forty-two to forty-five thousand gallons at a time. How are we metering them when they're using, I mean, truck after truck after truck to water down these areas?
Yeah, they have. Those are those are probably four or five thousand gallons would be a big truck and they're metered. So those numbers have been quantified in the master plan. You can see that. When we quantify losses, we extracted the amount of water that we knew were sold to construction. We're concerned that perhaps people are stealing water. But if it's done legitimately, they have a meter, they check out a meter from Dawn and it's metered and paid for. So it's it's quantified, that's quantified. So we'll go on to treatment. So treatment, we have a treatment plant that's got anomalous capacity of two million gallons a day. We have some limitations in that capacity and that our raw water pumps can only pump about one point eight million gallons per day into the plant. Our plant currently operates inefficiently, like I mentioned, we lose about two hundred thousand gallons a day on a peak day for backwashing. Which we should be losing maybe a fourth of that amount for backwash. So our treatment units are old. Uh, we end up backwashing every three or four hours as opposed to every twenty-four hours. Our our Clackamas River water is very, very clean, it's very high quality water. So our our backwashers should not be near that frequent. So as we get down to the end here, I'll talk about what we propose to do, but you've got two old filters that were put in, I would guess in the sixties. I don't remember exactly how old they are. And you've got two newer filters we'll put in, I believe, just after two thousand. So the proposed proposed uh solution here is we're recommending you remove the old filters and replace them with membranes. And the two filters that we're salvaging, we're going to be replacing the media this year. So I think it's still scheduled for this. Low water use period in the next few months. So we're going to try to restore filter units three and four to function better, use less backwash water, use more efficient water. Then the other component of our water treatment plant is we've got the one point eight million gallons coming into the plant, two hundred thousand being consumed by the plant. And then our effluent, the high service pumps where we pump everything into the distribution system has limited capacity also. So when we when we make improvements to the treatment plant. It's a holistic approach. We needed to talk about the treatment facility that membranes or the filters themselves, plus the. Pumps that pump it into the distribution system. So each component has limitations. So at this point, we're only able to produce about one point six million gallons per day on a peak day, pushing our units to run twenty-four hours a day. Distribution system, um, right now you have. We have three levels. We have a high zone, we have an intermediate zone and a low zone. Uh, we're and right now the the high zone serves the intermediate zone, the high level storage serves the intermediate zone and the high zone. And the new development we've experienced at the north end of town all comes through the high level storage shank. So not only the. High and intermediate, but the low level services that we're building up on spring water up in Bonnie Meadows and those developments to the north. All take water from the high level reservoir. So we're proposing also in the distribution system to create a new pressure zone called the low low zone. And that would be from about Eagle Creek Road to the river. And back to uh River Mill, maybe back to the water wastewater plant, so back towards Lakeshore. So right now those that area has pressures that exceed a hundred and twenty, hundred twenty-five PSI. So by code, a private property that develops has to put in pressure regulation if the pressure is over eighty. But the hundred and twenty-five, it's it's legal, it's just hard for for the city to maintain. So we're. It's much more critical when you're working with high pressure water lines. So we're proposing the master plan has some. Pressure reducing valves to create a new pressure zone that we the low low zone. Other than that, the master plan identifies a grid that we want, so it it lays out a backbone to the water system that will go up to Deuce Road and cover the entire UGB. Storage is the last component, uh, storage, we have one point nine million gallons of storage, which makes us deficient. Right now of about three hundred fifty thousand gallons. Now, as you're aware, we're in the process of. Designing a a new high level storage that would be located above Lawrence Road that will serve feed into the high pressure zone. Which in turn feeds the intermediate zone. Uh, and. We are proposing that we need to add, I believe it's another one point five million gallons over the next twenty years. So one thing we can do too is when Melanie and I have been working with property owners that I think we can make our tank a little larger than five hundred thousand. We we went to the county and asked for approval for one million gallons. And they approved it, but they put some restrictions on us that would effectively prohibit it from doing that, prohibit us from doing that. Because it encroached into the tree farm too much. But I think we can work with the property owner and encroach into the tree farm. To overlap where he has his farm roads, so someplace where he doesn't produce a crop, I think should be okay. I need to, I've left one message for him and he indicated he'd be amenable to talk. But I haven't been able to make contact with him yet, but we will in the next few weeks to resolve that. So in an overview, what we're recommending, and maybe I stepped over that in the treatment plan, but let's go back to the treatment. Your critical component is the treatment plan, your distribution system is working fine, your source is adequate. And your district and your storage is adequate. There's no problem with those. Treatment is really critical. So we've we foresee that in the next two years, you will need to expand your water treatment plant. So we will bring the source capacity up with it when that happens. Uh, like I mentioned, you have two point six million gallons of water you're allowed to take out of the Clackamas River. So when we put in new pumps, we'll upsize those pumps to make sure we can pull the full capacity out. And if we if we follow up with this reclaimed water, we'll end up sizing the raw water pumps to be able to pump three million gallons a day. So our proposal is, our recommendation is that we. Uh, over the next two years, we identify a funding program. We have estimated a cost in today's dollars of about twelve million dollars, twelve point five million is the initial cost that we need to cover. Twelve point five million, then I, you know, my my estimates are always conservatively low, which means I I'm usually a little bitter. But let me tell you, in this case. We've got a price from uh Westec who provides the membrane units. And so to add two million gallons a day membranes, it's only one point eight million. That's all of the equipment. So one point eight million, then when I added all the components that we need to do. I I end up just short of eleven million at the water, at just at the plant. So I believe our numbers are good. Uh, recognized with the membrane units, when we remove the old filters, one and two. We now have a large open space and these membrane units are very compact, the footprint's very small. So we can get, actually, we can get three million gallons a day into the footprint of where that one million gallon per day treatment units sit today. So with the recommendation of going to a membrane plant. We don't need to do but very minor building modifications and there would be no change in the building footprint. So we plan to add uh larger office space and bathroom facilities at the plant. But other than that, it's just a matter of reconfiguring the interior of the buildings that's there. So that's a major benefit to go with membranes. I mentioned two in my report and maybe in this overview that. Uh, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars more expensive to go with membranes. But it's the same story that we have with the wastewater plant that you're you're actually buying higher quality water. And you're also anticipating future water quality changes. You'll be prepared for that. And and I, we provided this to you uh maybe a month ago. And I we've had since then, we've had a few meetings with city staff and with the planning commission. So I I listed a few minor changes on the last page. They're not significant, they don't impact the capital improvement plan, but there's things you should be aware of when you see a final draft, some of these things will be incorporated. Into the final draft, that'll be different than the draft you've seen.
What? What's? Quick question on the capital improvement planning, what amount of water rights do we secure for forty thousand dollars?
Well, that's just a matter of getting that reclaimed water. I don't believe there's any water rights we'll get. I think we'll have reclaimed water. We perhaps can buy water rights. I think the mill. Had a water right, but it was like point zero two, it was like ninety gallons per minute. So it really wasn't a lot of money. This is simply the administration to work through the legal aspects of getting reclaimed water, is what I anticipate.
What what is it, what is typically, I've never bought water rights before, but what does it typically cost to acquire? Like if we had to go outside and acquire from Boring or from. One of those other jurisdictions, it says very expensive. I'm just curious, what does that look like?
You know, I don't, I don't know, Boring has groundwater, so you wouldn't be able to buy their rights. He'd be able to buy their water.
Oh, I got.
So we need to look at who has water rights on the Clackamas River. And those are what you'd buy. So if you want to buy from Clackamas River water or someone downstream. But water in Oregon is gold. So I think that they they can put whatever value they want on it. Because every municipality has to have water. So if you don't have water, you're in big trouble.
The other cities that have Clackamas River water rights are Lakos, Swigun, Tigard.
Well, you mentioned leakage or or loss in the distribution system. What does it take to to address that or to get going on that? I know we capped it at the mill, old mill site, but. What what are our next steps on that or proposed next steps? And what does it take to get going on that?
That is one comment I made on my my errata page is that we're going to add a hundred thousand dollars into the capital improvement plan to address that. So then we've budgeted money this year. And there's also, we've reached out to uh Oregon Associated Water Utilities, they will provide staff to come help us find leaks for free. So that's good. I we talked to Dawn about doing that. Uh, we're just getting started. I think we need to budget real dollars to bring in companies. There's three or four companies we're aware of. That I know one company will actually come in and put transmitters on your fire hydrants. And then remotely, they can tell you where the leaks are. They they listen, they say, okay, you've got a leak. Two hundred and seventy-two feet from this hydrant and a hundred and seventy feet from this hydrant. So you go out in the field and you dig at that point, that's where your leak is. But those are a thousand dollars per hydrant and they're permanent setups. So these people remote remotely tell you what's happening. And they have a minimum of twenty-five hydrants to get started. So there's programs out there that will help us to identify the leaks. We we plan on, in fact, the Water Management Conservation Plan, a big part of that was leak detection and repair. So a part of this water master plan is the Water Conservation and Management Plan that we have to do for OWRD. And that identified in two years, we wanted to have quantified where the leaks are. And then in five years, we need to give a status report of how we're accomplishing repair of those leaks. Now, the Water Management Conservation Plan also projected the numbers. We're using three point one percent as your annual growth rate now. I think that came out of the wastewater study. But if we were to reduce losses just one percent per year over the twenty year planning window. Our two point six million gallons of source capacity would be adequate to meet our peak day demands. So that that's a good challenge. OWRD wants us to continue to find leaks until we're down to ten percent loss and we're at thirty-seven percent now.
Is that is that a standard for cities to be at ten percent or is that aspirational?
I think that's aspirational. I think that OWRD wants that, but I I think an ideal system would still have fifteen percent losses.
So we got a ways to go.
We got a ways to go, yeah. When you consider we produce one point six million and we lose. You know, thirty-seven percent of that. So we're losing four or five hundred thousand gallons a day.
Is that based on what we we know through metering?
Yes. And so it could be inaccurate metering. So although I have to say that your per capita demands are huge, so. Your per EDU water consumption, daily water consumption is very large, so it's much larger than a typical community. But one loss area could just be inaccurate meter readings. Because all we have to do is compare the metering at the water plant to the meter readings of sales. And that difference is losses.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay.
We'll be back next month with the final draft. We'll spit that early so you have it in your packet and then ask for adoption next month.
All right.
Very good.
Very much.
Thank you.
Very informative, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we are at the second consideration for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight and ordinance amending chapters two point oh four. Council meetings and Estacada Municipal Code. So you've all seen it before and I have a motion on the floor.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight and ordinance amending chapter two point zero four council meetings of the Estacada. Council meetings of the Estacada Municipal Code.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes, thank you. Okay, last on the list, I have second consideration, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine and ordinance amending chapters one point two. Okay, last on the list, I have second consideration ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero nine and ordinance amending chapters one point two zero. Uh, mayor council nominations of the Estacada Municipal Code. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero nine and ordinance amending chapter one point two zero mayor council nominations of the Estacada Municipal Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, I'm at the next citizen and community group comment and I have Thomas, you're up. I'm not even gonna bother with the last name. I get it wrong every time, so. You know who you are. That's.
It's on. Okay, um. I find it necessary to call out the abhorrent behavior of the Democrat Party right now. And even though you might not think it will spill down this far, I believe it could possibly. When you see a debate happen and then Biden becomes uh it's not the the candidate and then they just install somebody and they're screaming about everybody being, the Republicans are always trying to destroy democracy, of which I will have to remind you, we are a constitutional republic, not necessarily a democracy. But that is kind of what dictators do. Is that not right? That they just say, this is who you're gonna vote for, live with it. So my point is, is that when if they're gonna behave like that in that kind of capacity, how do you stop them from doing anything downstream? And if anybody is, is okay, I, I if, if somebody on the Democrat side had got shot at, it would be news forever. And it was twenty four hours after Trump got shot. How is it that, that they can install somebody who was the drag on the Democrat Party and has now gone to the best thing since electricity? I, I, I don't understand how the whole Democrat Party as a whole accepted that without a vote, without anything. I just have to believe that globalism is, is, is taking over the entire world as a whole, and I call progressivism a cancer, in my opinion. My opinion and a lot of other people's opinion. So I would ask that the behavior, all of your behavior is always good, not, I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody in this room. But I would say be very aware of what's going on because when you're, when they're flying in thirty thousand illegals a month on our dime to wherever they go in the middle of the night, they're gonna be here and what's going on in, in Aurora, what's going on in Springfield, Ohio could happen here anymore.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, do I have any online? No. Okay, Vincent, you're up again.
Yeah, I'll be quick.
All right.
Uh, three small points. Uh, the Parks Master Plan, so we have been putting out the survey periodically. Right as of right now, I have about seventy responses online and I just got thirty back to the city plus probably about fifty that I have. So we're probably sitting about like hundred and fifty responses on it. Uh, after the meeting on Wednesday, I'm gonna have the city put it out again. If any of you see it on Facebook, if you could do me a favor, it, fill it out if you can, but also share it to like whatever, you know, local groups or any of that stuff, just take the link, put it in there, just like say, hey, this is from the city, just promote it a little bit and we might be able to bump up the numbers on the online response. That would be great. Uh, uh, point two, just echoing what the gentleman earlier at the beginning of the meeting said about Dan Walker. I've had some issues with Dan Walker. The service has been great, but the actual getting ahold of them, it, I counted, it took about twenty one uh phone calls over the course of three weeks to actually get someone to pick up the phone over there because I needed to switch something about my trash service. And I actually have not got a bill since May of twenty twenty three from their office at all. They just, they just stopped billing me for some reason. I've continued to pay as I'm supposed to. I just don't understand how they, they cannot get me a bill, but they can give you the accurate numbers. So it, it is interesting. So I, I, I did call the, uh, someone at the city and they've said a lot of people have, I don't understand how how I called them twenty times over three weeks and then finally pick up the phone. I don't know how people are getting their service set up. Because it's, you know, how, how are they getting ahold of people and how are they actually getting their trash picked up and stuff? How are they renting dumpsters if they can't talk to anybody? Doesn't make any sense, but that was just my point about Walker disposal. Uh, and the only third thing about the water treatment plant, uh, just that, I, I'm just curious about the outflow and the temperature of water that they're actually letting out into Estacada, uh, into the river. And I'm just, I was curious if you have any environmental numbers on like the temperature of the water going into it and the actual effects on like this, the salmon runs or the steelhead runs or any of that stuff. I'm sure there are regulations they have to follow with like the temperature of the water released and stuff like that. But I just want to make sure that they're addressing that there won't be any deleterious effects on the river due to that water getting put in there. And if you have any information about that, I, I would love to read it.
It's actually uh crime, water pollution in the second degree. If the water that we put into the river isn't with, within the um state specs.
Right, but uh the only thing I did see, you know, that the mixing treatment over in the Deschutes is having effects on the river in Bend and it's, it's, it's actually hurting the ri, the, the river below the dam because they did their preparatory mixing tower that they've been testing out for the last couple of years. And PG, PG and E still isn't getting fined by DEQ for, for doing that. So I just want to ensure that that's actually, if, if, if something does happen where they actually are doing something like that, that they're actually getting fined and they let, address the situation.
Good enough, fair enough question. Thanks, city. Can get back to you on that. All right, thank you. All right, we're at the end of the day here, so I'm gonna start off with you, Jerry, and closing comments.
Uh, thank you, city staff. Um, between the, the meeting we had earlier today and the, the workshop tonight, um, my blood got pretty hot. I don't, you know, um, there's a lot, a lot going on there and I really do appreciate the questions that were asked, the points that were brought up and uh I, I really, really feel that the decisions that were made tonight are gonna get us the best, um, the best possible answers as far as dollars um for our community. So I like the, I like the direction that we went, um. Uh, again, I, my ignorance showed tonight by bringing up the, um, by just wanting to learn more about the third party. You know, third party process, but um I really feel after listening to you guys that the um putting it out to bid is gonna get us the best, best possible product for our dollars. So um, I like that. Uh, thanks, everybody, for everybody that came tonight, everybody that stuck it out. Um, I really appreciate all of you. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank those of you that showed up in person and expressed your opinions and shared with us to help us to be able to make decisions that reflect your wants and your desires and your vision for this community. I'd just like to encourage people to participate, like one, you gotta vote, there's votes coming up. Put the right people that align with whatever your personal values or your personal visions are for the community or the state or what, whatever it may be, but go and express your opinion, do so in a way that's actionable, you know, by participating and to echo. You know, you guys have asked, when I say you guys, the community has asked for transparency, they've asked for communication and I feel like we're really trying to do that now. We're opening up, we're putting more surveys out. But you need to meet us in the miss, in the middle here and participate, please, so that we can really make decisions that reflect what you, the end user want for this community. So that's where I'm at with this. Great conversation. I appreciate everybody's points tonight. So thank you.
Uh, thank you, everybody for coming. I really appreciate it. Um, we have a lot of important decisions to make and some are very, very difficult and things don't always go the way you planned. Um. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out is that our lovely food cart, Freckled Peach, is closing and their last weekend will be this weekend, so I encourage you to um, get some waffles. Um, I don't know what I'm gonna do without them. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, I'd encourage everyone to get out and vote as that time's coming and uh, like Jonathan said, uh, just make sure that you're voting for people that represent what you want to see happen in Estacada and encourage you to get out and do that. And thank you for taking the time to come out and participate and the people that were able to make public comment. I think nothing speaks louder than that, than taking the time out of your day, coming and joining us for the meeting and investing your time and then, and then saying your piece, whether it's three minutes, five minutes, ten minutes, however much time you get for that. Um, speaks loudly and I think those voices get heard a lot better. Um, not to say that that's right or wrong, but I think that compared to shooting an email off, investing the time to come show up and have your voice heard. Um, just encourage more and more people to do that. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
I just want to thank uh, thank the council for the great discussion tonight and then also uh for city staff, I guess Melanie for taking the time to prep us and get us ready for the uh, for the workshop this evening, uh, that led to a very productive meeting, I feel, and it was very helpful for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Um, I'd like to echo just thanks, everybody for coming out tonight and um, thanks to staff and council. Sorry I wasn't here last meeting, it's probably one of the only meetings I've really missed, but um I had plans with my daughter for her birthday and we went to her first concert, if you must know where I was, but so. Was it the Schnitzer? It was for her. Yeah, it was actually pretty good. So um, yeah, you just have to do a little kind of work-life balance thing and she came first last meeting. So, but I appreciate all of the lively discussion tonight and thanks again to Melanie for taking the time and reaching out to us individually to go prep us for the workshop. Um, there's a lot of information to go over and um, hopefully we are headed in the right direction and um, yeah, thanks, everybody.
Appreciate that. And then mine's more of a, uh, a praise for the council I have up here right now. The great thing about having a good council is the council that asks all the questions, so you don't have to. Because I used to ask all these questions, you know, about every issue that ever came through Estacada. Now, I'm lucky if I get one question in because these guys are on top of it. I appreciate everything they've done. One's leaving, one's staying. You know, whatever the case may be, as a council, they have done a great job and they continue to do a great job. And the new ones coming in, I see people here out in the audience that are both running, I know. I'm proud to see that. To know a council and what it does is to understand the city of Estacada. Because we have a lot of decisions that come before us. So I appreciate each and every one of you and I thank you for everything that you do in your expertise and staff, as always, has done a great job and having Peter there to ask those important questions has made a difference in some of the decisions that I might have made. So I have to thank him for everything that he does uh to help us get through this. So that said, I thank everybody for coming tonight and we will adjourn this meeting.